Good afternoon. My name is David. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees thanks you for joining their May special board meeting by teleconference. The Board is always interested in hearing public input. If you have three registered speakers to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, you can press star three now and your keypad to be put in the queue to speak. A member of our staff will take your name. When you hear Chair Steen say your name, you'll be live in a couple of two minutes. You will hear a bell chime. Now, if you have ten seconds to continue, please remember to identify yourself for speaking each time you choose. And we now turn it all over to Chair Steen. Chair Steen has the floor.
Thank you. We're getting a lot of background noise, so hopefully everybody will be on mute. I want to call to order the special meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees convening as the Risk Management Committee, May 20th, 2020, 1 o'clock. Carolyn Schellman, would you call the role?
Yes, sir, I will. John Steen.
Here.
Dr. Mackey.
Present.
Ed Kelly.
Here.
Andy Gonzalez.
President here.
Mayor Ron Nuremberg. Your Honor, I mean, Mr. Chairman, we have a forum.
Thank you very much. Let's go to the safety message, which is Agenda Item Two, and that, I want to turn it over to our CEO, Paula Gold Williams.
Thank you, Chair Steen, and very much I want to thank all the members of the Board and all the members of the public that are dialed in today. Today's a special meeting, but it is one of many that we continue to focus on safety. We very much, I can never say enough, appreciate the leadership of Mayor Ron Nuremberg, who's on our board, as well as Judge Nelson Wolf, who continue to provide daily updates and monitor the progress that we are making in the community around flattening the curve. I also want to thank Governor Abbott, who is working hard to figure out a way where the entire state of Texas and San Antonio, as a part of that, will be coming out of this current phase that we have, where most people have been working home and staying safe. That said, our employees are out there every day, working very hard. We have over 3,000 employees. They continue to be identified with separate teams. Our front-facing team are primarily our frontline workers, people in the field who are maintaining our assets and making sure that the power stays on. They're working, they continue to work and we're moved into this period where storms will continue, but they are working safely and they are making sure that we are keeping the power reliable. We continue to have the white team that are working in secure areas and in control environments, and we have our orange team that's working from home. Everyone, every day, is reminded to work safely. Please understand from a public standpoint that our employees are also encouraged to continue to social distance, to wear masks, and so if they do not walk up to you like they may have in the past and come up and shake, you know, shake your hands, it is because we are still actively practicing social distancing. While 3,100 employees are a lot, it is not a lot in comparison to keeping a city of close to 2 million people powered and contributing to the Texas power grid. So people are, on our, on our teams, all reminded to practice social distancing and to do it while at work and to think about it even when they're away from work and on their personal time. Staying safe is staying safe. So we are committed to the community, our customers, and our, our community and our employees, and we will continue to focus on safety every single day. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's go to Agenda Item Three, the invocation. Mr. Richard Luhon, please.
Good afternoon. Please join me in our invocation. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one of, one another. Thank you for helping us accomplish our work and our goals this day. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Luhon. Really, really well done. The next item on our agenda is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. For this meeting, we do not have any registered speakers. As a reminder, members of the public do not have to attend a board meeting to communicate with the Board or with CPS Energy. There are several different communication channels. You could email us at feedback@cpsenergy.com, by phone at 210-353-2222, or by mail to P.O. Box 1771, San Antonio, Texas, 78296. So let's move to Agenda Item Five, which is the CEO remarks. So back to you, Ms. Gold Williams.
Thank you, Chair Steen. So today is a special meeting, but it is very much a part of the Board's broader program. The Board, in its infinite wisdom, decided years ago that the company needed to stay focused on risk, and this particular Board has indicated its preference and leadership in ensuring that the full Board has the opportunity to think about some of the company's most broad and complicated risks. Accordingly, we have meetings throughout the year at the subcommittee level. We have an operations oversight committee. We have an audit and finance committee and several others. So at least two Board members work to staff these committees and talk about specific risks. Today, we are lucky to have a quorum of the Board and where we are going to talk about the bigger landscape that we have. And once again, I want to thank the Board for taking the extra time out of your very busy schedules to help us focus on what the landscape looks like and really try to have a dialogue, providing more information openly for, for the community here and for the Board to be able to ask additional questions. So I want to say that CPS Energy has had a risk program for a very long time, but probably up until about 15 years ago, it was primarily insurance program. And so what we did is we mitigated our exposures by making sure that we have proper coverage, property liability, those types of things, and just the normal things that any, any business would have. While we still have an active insurance program, what was really important is start to thinking about this very complex organization, realizing that there are broad risks that can come in any area of our company, and that we needed to start looking at that comprehensively. We do try to rank our most, all of our risks, and we do try to make sure that we are focused on the highest risk, and again, having deep dialogues about that during, during the year. This meeting today, the primary theme is about something that's actively on everyone's mind, is again, how are we managing through the challenges that have been caused by the pandemic spread across the globe, and very much, something very important right in our own community. I don't think we can talk about it enough. We have never seen a velocity and an enormous impact as, as much as we've experienced with the pandemic risk. And probably the thing that's most challenging is everyone, our mayor, our judge, our governor, and our president, and many, many representatives in the legislature, both in, in Texas and across the nation, are trying to figure out ways to send support out to the community and to get, get more testing out, all of those things that are critical and a process. But because we don't have a vaccine, this still is going to be a very challenging risk to manage through for 2020. So you're gonna, you've heard it, trustees, before, you're going to continue to hear it, because it affects just about every single aspect of what we do. There's nothing I can think of that we haven't had, that we look at process, staffing, resources, supply chain, technical issues. We have had to rethink our everyday prism, communication even, through the, the, how is it potentially being impacted by the risk COVID and just basically pandemic risk overall? So what we thought is if we had a full themed meeting about this, where you can hear more and have it more broad across the organization, again, if, if we're having an audit and finance committee meeting, the subcommittee focused on risk is going to solely focus on audit and finance type subjects, same thing on the operations side. Today, we're going to give you a taste of a wide range of portfolio. It's not everything, but a view. And so we're going to talk to you about overall how we look at risk broadly and pandemic from the enterprise perspective. We're going to highlight pandemic risk and actually show, or have you turned to a page? It actually shows our thinking. There have been many pandemics in the world, and so initially, we had that risk rated as, as high and swan even. We thought at the onset, several years ago, when there was a discussion about being able to have access to vaccinations, and we, we were able to, to find a way to have access to vaccinations if those reserves were restored. Here's the problem we experienced, there's no reserve for us to access. And so our, our thoughts on how extreme the pandemic risk can be have evolved over time, and we're gonna, we're gonna highlight that again. I give you a high-level view, and we have a little graphic that shows. Now, we really believe that pandemic risk, because of the speed of it, the enormity, the ability for it to affect so many people in very intense ways, it's now becoming one of our fastest, most complicated risk that we're dealing with. We will take you, as we go through it, we'll take an operational view. You'll hear from our gas team, and they will set the stage about the challenges that they have and how they've mitigated it. You'll hear from our wires and operational teams, all the way to the generating plant, you know, what are we doing there? We will, we will also talk about one of our most, most prominent, big mitigations that we've been working through, which is still having to consider there might be a need to take certain critical positions and roles in areas and sequester teams of people in case we got an instance of high community spread or company spread. So you'll hear a bit about that. We are contemplating what it looks like in another section that you'll hear this afternoon about what does a return to the office look like? And we have a general plan, and one of our leaders here is going to talk about what that, how do we, how do we scope that out and what's the approach? I will kind of clip notes, tell you, this is a new normal, and so we're going to be very careful in 2020. We want, we're going to have to stage exiting this building, and we're going to have to stage entering the new building. And in general, I am really typically saying publicly that we were first into COVID protections and social distancing, and we will be one of the last ones out. So we will, we will have a very unusual, I think, but well-planned entry back into new, new regular office working and business working. But as, we have the six pillars that really focus on our reliability and resilience, safety and security in, in the environment, but the foundation of the things that we do also has to be looked at through a financial prism. So we will have a bit of discussion about what the, what does the financial landscape look like? Quite frankly, and been reported before, and it's public, municipal entities, including utilities, have been put on negative outlooks, and the, the stresses caused, not just on the utility itself, with increased costs associated with safety equip, more safety equipment, mask, cleaning materials, those types of things, but, but ultimately, because our customers are stressed, that in turn affects the things that we are trying to do for them. So that's an example of how it looks like to us, but we're going to talk about that as well. Ultimately, at every single point, we're going to have a brief discussion. Again, we'll give you some context, and we'll explain our mitigations. We will take a break after each one of those, multiple times during the session, and, and do a roll call, if that's more helpful, or just generally ask the Board to ask, you know, ask us any questions or give us any comments and thoughts you may have. This is designed to be a work session, but here we are in COVID, so we don't have the ability to, to read body language and all of those things, but technology has been working pretty good for us. So I want to thank you in advance for doing this remote work session and being, again, so engaged in all of our risk and really being focused on giving us great insight and, and focus, stay focused, and make sure that we're doing the right things for our customers and community. And those are the main points that I wanted to give you an opening preview for Chair Steen.
Thank you, Ms. Gold Williams. Do we have any questions or comments of our CEO at this point? Hearing none. Let's move into the portion of our agenda where we're actually going to, going to meet is the Risk Management Committee. And so at this point, I want to pass the gavel to our Risk Committee Chair, Dr. Willis Mackey. Dr. Mackey?
Hey, Chair Steen, at this remarks.
Oh, this is John Steen. I, I, did I, did I lose everybody, or can you all hear me?
I'm still here.
All right. Were you able to hear Dr. Mackey, Ed?
No, I don't hear Dr. Mackey.
It's just you and I?
No, I heard Dr. Mackey, then he hung up.
Okay. Well, let's just wait, wait a minute for him to check back in.
No, I'm still on.
Oh, okay, Dr. Mackey, for some reason, you started, and then it went blank for a good while, so go ahead.
At this time, uh, it's, uh, remarks, but I'd like to proceed to seven, Risk Management Committee update by Corey.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Mackey, and good afternoon, trustees. Do a quick sound check, make sure everyone can hear me well.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Excellent. Well, it's a pleasure to be here with everyone, virtually at least, and, you know, I really appreciate the, the opening comments from Paula. She, she did a wonderful job, kind of teeing up kind of the purpose of the, the Risk Management Committee that, that gets together today, and how they're really taking, you know, how we're really taking a, you know, a bigger landscape view of risk and, and really giving a good preview. Um, you know, I want to give, um, you know, kudos to Paula as well and the senior leadership team. They, they also do a wonderful job, you know, cascading their view of the enterprise risk into, you know, all of their operations, and, and it really comes through in the manifestation of all the good work that the teams have done. And, you know, with that said, as Paula alluded to, we are going to do a deeper, more comprehensive and holistic, uh, deep dive into COVID today, and, you know, the comprehensive nature of it lends itself to a number of different speakers, just like Paula alluded to. And that's great. I mean, these are the folks on the front line who we're going to want to hear from, and we'll have, we'll have that opportunity. As Paula alluded to, we will have some pauses along the way as, as we transition from topics to speakers, to ensure we have the, you know, appropriate amount of time for robust dialogue and questions. I will be primarily facilitating the, the meeting today. I'll have some early opening comments, then it'll really be an opportunity to hear from those folks on the front lines. So given that, let's dive in, and we'll head to PDF, page four, for our objectives and takeaways. And so, you know, a few things on this page obviously jump off. You know, we are continuing to maintain strong operations. And let it, let it, I'm going to pause, I'm getting some feedback. Is everyone else hearing me okay?
I hear you.
I hear you.
All right. Yeah, so, so let's continue. Um, so, you know, continuing, we are continuing to maintain strong operations, as, as I alluded to, and, and we're, we're doing that through kind of the proactive planning that, that the senior leaders and chiefs use to make sure they consider all different facets of risk. And, and as Paula alluded to, that we're also preparing should, should conditions worsen, you know, what does that look like? What does the planning look like? And, and we'll touch into that in, in more, in more depth today. And in the same breath, again, as, as alluded to earlier, you know, our teams are, are planning for a new normal, as we said. What does it look like to, to return to the office in the near future? And, and all of that is kind of underpinned by the continued monitoring around, you know, the financial impacts that this crisis is having, and we continue to, to monitor those, you know, those changes. So with those as our kind of objectives for today, we can flip to PDF, page five, on the agenda. And, and this aligns well with, with the objectives, and as I alluded to, I'll do a brief tee-up at the beginning relative to our enterprise's preparation for risk. And then you'll really have the rest of the agenda to, to listen to our, our speakers, you know, talking about the kind of the origin of pandemic risk, like we talked about, and kind of what we've done prior leading into this crisis. And then the rest of the areas, we'll, we'll continue to dive into, you know, kind of the operational perspectives they have as they're going through today, and then, you know, the, the future planning and, and thinking that, that comprehensively is being done at, at all levels of leadership around potentially having to, to sequester should the need be, and, you know, and also what return to the office looks like. We'll continue and, and dive in on slide number, PDF six. You know, really, this is, you know, the enterprise's leadership, like Paula alluded to, and their strategy on risk, has really positioned us well going into this crisis. And, you know, that, that type of leadership and the, the type of comprehensive, holistic, macro kind of view of risk that they take day to day, has really enabled the organization to be resilient in, in the times we're going through. A lot of the knowledge sharing that continues to go on, you know, across the leadership and up and down the organization, has really led to this multi-dimensional consideration of risk, which remains important today, and you see kind of the output and success of that as we are handling the, the current COVID crisis. And so if we flip, continue on to PDF, slide seven, and Paula mentioned this earlier, you know, it is, it's very true that the velocity of risk is coming, is accelerating rapidly. You know, this pandemic has caused a number of things to, to speed up related to that, but the tools in place, the leadership in place, has enabled, you know, successful prioritization of, of the responses, and we're managing through those. The last slide I'd mentioned on PDF, page number eight, you know, goes without saying that no matter how well, you know, an organization prepares, a crisis like this requires some level of adaptation and flexibility. You know, through our, our risk programs and our other support programs, we continue to facilitate the enterprise through these pressures, and they're, they're managing very well. And that, the thing that stands out, I think, to, to many of us is kind of validation of the resiliency that this organization has, and probably the continued building of resiliency that this organization has. And, you know, from the, the standpoint of, you know, what a strong risk management kind of culture looks like, resiliency is continually a theme that all organizations strive for. It's, it's not always about just preventing the next risk, it really is about how prepared is that organization to work through and bounce back from that? And I think this crisis has kind of shined a light on the capabilities of CPS Energy to do that, and it's, you know, an honor to facilitate this conversation and let, let our leaders talk through kind of what they have been working on and doing. So I will, I will pause there on, on slide number nine. This will kind of be our first break for, for questions. And I'll see if there's any, any for me on just my, my intro before we dive into the next part. Okay, well, hearing none, I will continue on to slide number 10. I'll take a few moments here just to kind of tee up the discussion and kind of where we're going in, you know, next for the remainder of this presentation. Going left to right, you know, and highlighted in orange as our first box to be discussed, we'll have Bert Hargesheimer, who you've heard from before, talk about, as we alluded to, kind of when pandemic risk kind of first came on our radar and, and those activities we've done since. There's a few other items, and I'll kind of move left or right here and tee it all up. As, as Paula alluded to, we're going to do a deep dive from the organizational perspective. She's absolutely right, we have four of our key frontline areas that'll be speaking, and I'll introduce them when we get to that, that, that moment. And then from there, we'll pivot to the preparation and planning activities that have been led by Don Stanton, you know, should we, should COVID-19 get worse and conditions escalate, what our preparation looks like there, and then, and then pivot to the conversation around returning back to the office, you know, what is normal look. Ultimately, closed. View on our credit rating risk and ultimately maintain, managing through, you know, our financial stability. That's kind of a preview of kind of what's to come. I'll, I'll facilitate and kind of pivot as we go through each topic. So let's introduce Bert on, on slide 11. Bert, you've heard from before, he's our Senior Director of Fleet Operations and Safety. Bert reports in through Fred Bonneywell's organization and his leadership, and he's done a great job and been very active in this, in this crisis. And I'm going to now turn it over to Bert on slide 12 and, and let him walk through his slides. Bert?
Thank you, Corey. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, here you are.
Great. Good afternoon, trustees. So, so moving on to slide, page 12 on the PDF. In 2014, the Ebola outbreak happened, and we, we took a look at our pandemic risk, and we, we had a pandemic plan in place, but we, we began work on updating that plan and worked with the city to develop an MOU for strategic stockpile access for our employees, understanding that if there, if there was a pandemic, we wanted to be ready to be able to make sure that our employees could be, continue to work and, and keep the power, power generating and running through the system, as well as our gas, gas delivery. In FY16, we completed the update of that plan, and then we began annual testing and business continuity, business continuity review and updates, culminating with a pandemic exercise in December of 2018. And then, of course, this year, we had the impact from COVID-19, so the, the trajectory of the, the risk has, has evolved over time. Moving on to PDF page 13.
Oh, this is John Steen. Could I ask a question?
You sure can.
All right. So we had a pandemic exercise in December of 2018. Could, could you explain that?
Yes, sir. So...
Remind us of what that was about, how that, how that transpired.
Absolutely. So we do, we do a number of, of business continuity exercises each year, and we try to have one larger one. Every, every other year is, is GridX, which maybe you're familiar with, but it's a, it's a utility-based, uh, uh, business continuity exercise, looking broadly across the, the country at security, in particular, both cyber and physical security of, of the grid. And in 2018, we didn't have a, we didn't have a GridX, so Paula asked us to do an exercise, a pandemic exercise, to make sure that we're prepared to access and use our Health Event Continuity of Operations Plan in conjunction with our Business Continuity Plans. And so we, we modeled a, an outbreak and did a tabletop exercise with roughly 30 of our business leaders to walk through what we would do, how would be, how we would be prepared, looked at things like supply chain availability, financial impacts, and operational impacts in a one and a half day exercise.
This is trustee Kelly. Did, uh, did you learn anything there that helped us get out of the box quicker when the actual pandemic hit us?
Yeah, I think, I think it really prepared us to really be thoughtful when we, when we did our Business Continuity Plan Review back in February. I think that, that really prepared the operational leaders for that. Most of the, the folks that participated in that exercise are, are still, still with the company, so they all had that, that fresh experience to be thoughtful about how they looked hard at making sure that they were ready and that their teams were ready.
Thank you.
This is, uh, this is Paula, Gold Williams, the CEO. Hey, Bert, um, that said, I think, I mean, I was pleased that we were able to do it. I thought what we did better, as a result of really thinking this through, is I thought what we did better as a result of really thinking this through is really trying to put more focus on monitoring more broadly, like not just waiting for it to come, and that you all had, for example, noticed the COVID breakout, you know, halfway around the world. But part of it was, we kind of questioned whether or not we were paying attention to the awareness of where it might come from anywhere. But can you speak a little bit to that?
Yes, ma'am, for sure. I'm glad you brought that up. So we have a small occupational health team, but by doing that, that exercise, it made us definitely aware and paying attention to what was going on in the world. And when COVID-19 started to, started to outbreak in China, we had some initial discussions early in January before it was even known that it was on US soil, and took a number of steps. I planned to go into them more later on, but, you know, Paula took the step in January to have us start practicing social distancing and getting our people familiar with it should it come on the US soil. And the occupational health team and the people and culture team started working through potential issues and resolving issues that might arise should it come. And definitely, the business continuity exercise definitely helped us be ready and aware to be ahead of the game from that perspective.
This is John Steen. So I'm looking at that, and of course, you've got the pandemic risk low through those years, you know, fiscal year 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Somebody might look at it and think, well, did we miss something at the beginning of fiscal year 20? But I think we all have to remember, and you all correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that in late January, the Dr. Fauci told the country basically not to worry about COVID-19. I think the statement was something like, there's nothing to worry about. So, you know, just making the point that going into early February, we really weren't alerted to all of this. It was going to hit us like it has, just if you want to comment on that.
Absolutely. I mean, certainly, the, in January and February, the guidance from the government was that we were good, and not knowing that we already had cases on US soil at that point didn't help us to know that it might be an issue. Things certainly looked like, I would say, in mid-February that we were, you know, I'll tell you, I thought that we were keeping COVID-19 out of the United States, but obviously that wasn't the case.
Right. I'm just thinking someone might look at this and saying, why, as you got into fiscal year 2020, were you, was it still a green box? Was it still considered low risk? And so that, I think that's, that's an answer to that.
Well, then, John, fiscal year 20 started in February of 19, and so I think every major company in the country would have rated it a very low risk. If you'll recall, President George Bush, George W. Bush, formed a pandemic task force during his term and pushed hard for it, and yet the government decided it was really not worth fooling with. So it ended up being very, very low risk during this entire time. So the fact that we had raised it as a low risk, I think, was certainly realistic. But the fact that we had even looked at it is something that very few companies could vouch for.
Yeah, and just to be clear, it looks like to me on that chart that we're not dealing with, or I guess we are dealing with our fiscal year. That's right. Okay. Never mind.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, trustee Kelly. I think there, you know, since 2015, the federal government's approach toward the pandemic, our potential pandemic, has definitely changed a lot. And I think based on what we knew, we were doing everything we could do, and it looked, things looked right. And then, obviously, COVID-19 changed things quite a bit. If you move to slide 13, or page 13 on the PDF, it's been tough since it came in, and there's been some key, key things that have made it difficult. You know, the first is that with the fast-moving impact of COVID-19, it forced the country to reduce the economy to essential operations, which, you know, puts a strain on everybody. In addition, with the, with the way the outbreak transpired through China and then into the United States, you know, PPE was not readily available in the United States. And with COVID-19 being a very different pandemic, we, you know, there's no medical stockpile, there's no medical treatments available, and no vaccines, so, you know, there's no, there's nothing for us to access in that manner. And then the medical community is still learning about COVID-19, and so there's still a lot of unknowns about it. Moving on to-
Hey, Bert, one other thing. Look, I think, I think board members, you should challenge us. I mean, we, you know, we, that stockpile assumption was a big assumption, and we didn't have enough, nobody did, but we didn't have enough to say, what if there's no stockpile? And so I think everyone had a general sense that because we, you know, on a global basis had been able to get vaccines, that it was kind of, we took it for granted. Now, we all know that the development effect, you know, the vaccines could take a minimum of 18 months. And, but with focus, right, now, right now, we're starting to see, some people think that they are breaking through. The problem still is that the ability to validate whether the vaccine will work on a broad basis is still an unknown. So there's still all of these unknowns. And maybe the other thing to point out is nobody knows about how this particular virus will morph and change. But in general, I think we're having to really rethink that it's not just COVID-19. We have to think very, you know, much more multi-dimensional relative to these particular risks. So it's been a really growing learning experience for everyone, and we, of course, are thinking about all the things that we have to do fundamentally and strategically, because maintaining the power on the grid and make sure that San Antonio has the power that it needs and Texas has its needs is making us, making us be a lot more about, you know, focused on the what ifs. So I do, I will say, from the time that you look at the chart, early on, in the beginning of the year when we thought it was, it might be more of a fluke nature, rarely would it happen, the whole world could get on it, and it just, if it did happen, it would be big, but we could manage it. Now we're having to rethink everything. And when you see it high, it's because we think there are even more dimensions that we're going to have to look at more than we ever thought for, thought of before. And so I just wanted to make sure I stress that to you. There is so much more work to do in this space.
Yes, ma'am. We, you know, as an example, we just had our medical director on our Enterprise Resiliency Planning Team call today, and, you know, he stated that he doesn't expect a vaccine for 18 months. So, you know, as Paula said, we, there's a whole bunch of things we need to rethink about this as we, as we, you know, relook at our, as we continue to operate, but also as we look at enhancing our pandemic planning for the future.
But in particular, that was Dr. Hassett, wasn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
So he is a Vice President of Medical Operations at Concentra, which is one of the service providers that Bert and many members of the team have vetted. They're on top of this thing, and they're also been helping us develop our testing strategy that we apply to our employees.
Yep. So looking at PDF page 14, the organizational action, so the tone of the top, as I said earlier, Paula moved quickly to have us start practicing the social distancing and getting people comfortable that that was something that we needed to do, you know, the elbow, elbow bumps and that type of thing. In addition, with that, we started pushing communication and educational information about COVID-19 in January to the company, to the employees. Going into a little more detail on the People and Culture and Occupational Health Partnership, the People and Culture Team, with Paula's support, put in place a lot of, a lot of protocols and things for our employees to make sure that pay and their families wouldn't be a distraction, and that they would know that their, that their personal lives would be taken care of so that they could continue to maintain the power. And then, working with my team, the Occupational Health Team, we aligned with all the CDC recommendations and the US State Department and local guidelines as they changed to proactively in a conservative manner quarantine employees who may have traveled on a cruise ship, for example, or traveled to Europe. And we tried to quickly make changes to our processes and communicate with the organization to make sure that we stayed ahead of, ahead of things to keep COVID-19 out of CPS Energy. This partnership evolved into the Enterprise Resiliency Team, which had daily meetings and continues to meet frequently, at least three times per week now, to work through issues, make sure that we had all the right leadership at the table and engaged, and look at, look at the organization, look at the community, look at our people, and make sure that we were taking the right steps to evolve and handle, handle the pandemic and minimize the impact to, to the grid. And that Enterprise Resiliency Team, excuse me, extensive chief oversight and involvement. Our chief team was continuously engaged in that work to make sure that all the organizational support was there and that everybody knew that we were all aligned. This also led to our operational preparation readiness. I referenced this earlier, but our operational teams in February reviewed all of our business continuity plans, and then with our Enterprise Resiliency Team, we had a challenge session with all of those plans to ensure that we really had looked at this thoroughly and were preparing our teams and were ready for some of the unknowns that might be coming down the road. And now, and the operational teams will be providing some further insight in that next. And then, from a proactive contingency planning standpoint, we're, you know, Paula talked about this earlier, we're looking at sequester and preparing for the eventuality that we may have to do that, and making sure that if we do, that we've got a really robust plan, that we've tested it, and that we, that if we have to do it, it makes sense when we do it. And then also looking at the new normal of how do we make our workplace safe for our employees that have to come in, as well as our, as our customer-facing work to make sure that those employees are safe and that the community and customers that we interact with are safe when we interact with them. And then, and then also preparing for next steps of when we would start to bring more people back into the office. This concludes my portion of the presentation. Moving to page 15, is there any, is there any further questions? Thank you for your time today. Corey, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you very much, Bert. Appreciate that discussion. Thank you, trustees, for the questions. And Paula, also thank you for your insights on all of those items. So a lot of work has been done and is going on there. I'm pivoting onto slide or page number 16. So this next section here, as I alluded to, we're going to focus on, you know, four folks from our key frontline areas. We've heard from some of them at some of the subcommittee meetings that we've had, so you'll recognize the names and some of the topics, but this will be a good, comprehensive opportunity to have them all walk through their organizations and their steps, have discussion around that. So let me start introducing them on slide 17. We'll hear from our leader of the Gas Solutions area, Richard Luhon. He reports into Fred Bonneywell's leadership, an organization like Bert did. And then we'll continue to flip, he'll go first, and then we'll continue to flip to page, page 18. Underneath Chris Euchster's leadership, we'll have three speakers, Kevin Polo, who you've heard from before, he's our new interim VP of Energy Supply and Market Operations. Then we'll hear from Zach Lyle, who's our Interim Director for System Operations. And then we'll close the operational perspective with Eddie Etheridge from the Power Generation Perspective. And so with that, let me hand it over to Richard, who will get us started on page number 19. Richard?
Thank you, Corey. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good afternoon, trustees. I'm pretty excited today to share with you some perspectives of how our Gas Solutions Team has adapted to working within COVID-19. Want to talk a little bit more, a little bit about our team, though, before I go into our COVID-19 response. Our Gas Solutions Team is made up of 230 employees, and we provide natural gas to over 358,000 customers. We also provide the fuel for our power plants. We install and maintain over 5,700 miles of distribution pipeline and almost 90 miles of transmission pipeline. Our operations and maintenance functions adhere to our federal and state regulatory requirements, and we're regulated by the Railroad Commission of Texas, as well as the US Department of Transportation's Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration. So we've provided gas to this community for over 160 years now. You know, our mission and our goal is to ensure safe and reliable delivery, and that's our focus. And COVID-19 has presented some new challenges for us, some very different challenges as we just discussed, but we remain committed to providing natural gas as we always have to the same level, you know, meeting the expectations that our customers have come to know and deserve. So I want to talk about our main risk. We're, as I mentioned, we have 240 employees in Gas Solutions. We're all centrally located in one facility, and we really cover the entire service territory. And so we're a small team, but we really do a lot, and we're very, very proud of that, of serving this company, this community, and serving our customers. Our top risk concern is an inability to meet customer needs or respond to gas system failures or leaks due to lack of available personnel as a result of increased COVID-19 exposure. Our risk mitigation plans have focused on several different areas, but as I mentioned, one of the biggest challenges we face up front is that we're all centrally located. And how do you make sure that you're implementing effective social distancing procedures? How do we make sure that we're limiting our interaction with other employees to keep the whole of the workforce safe? To start out, we were challenged with rethinking how we deploy our workforce. We've implemented a work-at-home strategy for our office personnel, made up of our engineering teams and our administrative support teams. As for our field personnel, really, we have two, we've divided them up into two major groups. One group is, they're smaller- One group is their smaller crews, and they're really configured to be more mobile with smaller vehicles. And for these crews, we've allowed them to deploy out of their homes directly into the field. We've seen a lot of good success with that, increases in productivity. You know, spreading out our people has also made us realize the true importance of effective communication during this time. The remaining crews are our leak repair crews. They're responsible for repairing all of the gas leaks within our territory and ensuring that our system continues to operate safely. These are larger crews with larger equipment, and again, they were all confined to one location. And what we've done with them is we've separated them into a second facility across town, a second CPS Energy facility. These crews also, when they arrive at work, they report directly to their vehicles. We limit their interaction with the crew they're assigned to, and also, we don't interchange personnel between crew. So again, if a potential exposure occurs, we've limited to the people that they've touched or interacted with. A second area of focus is for employees who, as part of their role, must enter customer homes or businesses on a regular basis. This may be to reconnect service or to investigate a gas issue in the home to ensure that they can make it safe. And we realized early on that these particular crews are at a higher risk of exposure, you know, having to go into homes on a daily basis. But we also understand and realize from the customer's perspective that there may be concerns with our employees having to enter their homes. In response to this, what we've done is we've implemented new procedures for utilization of advanced personal protective equipment. We've implemented lots of new, different equipment, different face masks, face shields, all the different types of things you'd expect. In addition to that, we've developed enhanced procedures for disinfecting of tools and equipment, and of course, personal hygiene. Just as important, we've equipped these personnel with tools to better communicate the procedures and the steps that they are taking to ensure the safety of our customers and, of course, our employees. And we've developed a customer script and a pamphlet to leave behind with the customers so they understand, you know, how we are working to keep them safe. In addition to that, ensuring the health of our employees is very important, and we're implementing a temperature and wellness check process for employees to check their health prior to the start of their shift daily, and we're implementing stations at all our facilities. In the event that we do see increased absenteeism, we work closely with our People and Culture, our Labor Relations Team, as well as our union leadership to develop solutions. You know, in the event we see increased absenteeism, we can look at other shifts, we can look at schedule changes, we can redeploy personnel where they're needed. And finally, as we see every single day, the COVID-19 landscape is changing. What that means for us is that we need to change with it. You know, we have a culture of continuous improvement, and we're always looking at these processes and seeing how we can make them better. We're always looking for better ways of communicating with our people and getting the message out, and we continue to evolve. Additionally, we've learned a lot going through this process, and many of the changes that we're making are going to carry forward with us in the future. So this concludes my portion of the presentation, unless there are any questions.
Chairman Stein, I have a question.
Go ahead with the questions, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, I have a quick question. We have defined our COVID-19 risk in gas solutions as having to do with lack of available personnel as a result of COVID. What about, does the pandemic have any impact on the risk of losing your supply chain of gas that you need in order to have that gas available to your customers? Is there any risk to your supply chain?
Yes, sir. We work very closely with our supply chain on a regular basis to identify critical stock I have Frank Almeras here next to me, who, he's actually across the room from me, who can also provide some input. But we work very closely with them on a daily basis to look ahead at our supplies, look at our critical needs, and ensure that we're in communication with our suppliers to make sure that the supply chain continues to meet our needs.
Yeah, so Richard, I would add, so I think that there's two pieces here, and I think, Mr. Kelly, you might have been asking about the commodity itself, making sure that we actually have supply of the actual, you know, natural gas.
Yes, that was my question, Frank.
Yes, sir. That's a good question. I will defer to Kevin Polo, who's going to speak in a minute on the operational side, actually, I think, on the next slide, and maybe he can share some comments on that. I believe, actually, he has some prepared comments on that.
Good. I'll hold my question down.
Good question. Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions? Okay, well, that was a great segue to introduce Kevin Polo, who is the Vice President of our Energy Supply and Market Operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. My name is, as Richard said, Kevin Polo. I am the interim Vice President for Energy Supply and Market Operations. So good afternoon, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about my team's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'd like to start, you know, by saying that the overarching priority with our response has been to keep our people healthy and safe. I will start on PDF page 22.
Trustee Kelly's question.
Before I go into kind of my prepared responses, I did want to address Trustee Kelly's question, you know, as far as commodity risk and supply risk. So we do, within Energy Supply and Market Operations, we are in contact with our suppliers, our commodity suppliers, really on a daily basis. And what we found out, I think, is they're taking steps, much like you're going to hear in my presentation and the presentations that follow, in the sense that from a control room perspective, they're taking steps to really keep those operators as isolated as possible to minimize interaction and exposure. You know, office and support personnel, they have moved to a remote work strategy, again, to minimize, you know, the potential for spread of any infection within their business operation. So they are concerned, and I think they're taking very proactive steps, just as we have within CPS Energy, to try to minimize any potential spread or risk to their ability to deliver the commodity.
One of the follow-up to that, and maybe this is not the time to talk about it, but I know there's been some questions about the PFC. Do they supply a significant portion of our gas that we, in turn, distribute to our customers? And how do you feel about the PFC?
Yes, Trustee Kelly, this is Chris Eukster. I think from an operational standpoint, we will be able to deliver that gas, or we will be able to contract that gas independent of the PFC. The PFC allows us to get more favorable pricing, and I would defer to either Paula or Gary Gold to talk a little bit about the financial aspect of that arrangement. But from an operational delivery standpoint, we don't see any risk there.
Okay, so if you were to have some type of a problem with PFC, you have other ways to cover that gap?
Yes, we believe we do.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to start, as I said, on PDF page 22. And much as Richard did, I'd like to start with an introduction kind of into the Energy Supply and Market Operations Team, or ESMO for short. But, you know, our team performs a wide variety of activities that includes such things as buying the fuel to supply our power plants. We do the analysis for our long-term generation needs. We do our long-term corporate load forecasting, so several different activities. What I want to focus on for today's discussion, though, is really our control room environment. So the ESMO team does operate a 24-hour control room that oversees our interaction with the ERCOT market, and particularly how our generation units dispatch into the market. You know, our operators are in communication with the power plants, with the ERCOT control room. You know, we're taking steps on a daily basis to minimize our exposure to market volatility. One of our other key functions within that control room environment is to monitor and control our natural gas transmission and distribution systems. So all of those things that we do in the control room environment are really geared to meet our objective of providing reliable and affordable energy for our customers. If we could turn to PDF page 23, I'll kind of transition to a more focused discussion on the COVID-19 response. But in general, you know, since we cannot operate our control room remotely, our greatest risk concern is that we have a lack of critical control room operators that, you know, that could actually continue to operate that control room. So we have implemented several steps to promote social distancing and limit interaction between people, all in an effort to reduce risk and the potential for exposure. For example, we've moved our real-time operations to our backup control room. We're doing, we've limited access to that backup facility to essential personnel only. We're doing remote shift turnovers, utilizing both of our control rooms, you know, as an additional social distancing step. You'll hear this, I think, in a lot of the presentations, but we've increased the frequency of our cleanings of those work areas, the control room areas, our common touchpoints. You know, we've implemented temperature screens for anyone that's entering the backup facility. As I mentioned earlier, you know, for the functions that we could, we've implemented a work-from-home strategy and allowed as many people as we could to move out of our headquarters' main office and function from home. And then, as Paula and Bert had mentioned, we've worked with a cross-functional, you know, enterprise-wide team to develop a sequester plan to, as a further means of protecting our critical control room staff in the event that the conditions were to warrant. And so that really concludes my main comments, and I'll pause for any further questions.
Yes, Kevin, I have a question. And I'm looking at the primary control room concern, and then the backup control room. Do we have the same person operating them, or there's one person, or there's one team that operates the control room? And then the backup control room, are they still communicating with each other, or do they have still access to each other? Are they totally separate?
That's a really good question. Actually, when we operate from both control rooms, we are in constant contact by phone between the operator who would be at the main control room and the operator who'd be at the backup. So they are constantly communicating, so they are not isolated from each other, except in the, you know, the physical sense, in terms of being in a different location.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can we move to Systems Operations? Zach?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'll be speaking at page 25. My name is Zach Lyle. I'm the interim Director of Operations and Reliability. Working in an area that has critical requirements around operating CPS Energy's electric grid during normal and emergency operations, we identified early that awareness around COVID-19 was going to be crucial. We focused the majority of our efforts on our employees. I believe their knowledge of the virus and how to protect themselves and their family at home was going to be the most important aspect. At the employee's home is where our frontline defense is. To shore that up, we implemented several strategies to protect our obligation around serving reliable power to CPS Energy's customers. If you'll move to page 26. Our primary and backup control rooms utilize shared workstations. These workstations have a NERC requirement that makes social distancing and a remote work strategy very difficult. Because of that, few proactive measures were put into place. We implemented an enhanced cleaning rotation that requires operators to perform a deep cleaning of their workstation that started the shift, and then again every four hours. This rotation includes a wipe down of all high germ risk areas in the office, like door handles and light switches. It also included high-traffic community areas like break rooms and restrooms. We challenge the employee to think differently. We ask them to pay attention to where and what they touched in their day-to-day life. As an engagement activity, we place red and green sticky notes in places that you'd expect a person to touch to visually identify how many locations that there's actually a possibility of contracting and spreading COVID-19. It looked like Christmas, most of February, March in the control room with all of the red and green sticky notes. We also partnered with our facilities group to start an electrostatic cleaning rotation, which is now actually an industry standard for control rooms. We utilized an infrared camera as a way to check temperatures without actually contacting every employee. The process was later enhanced by the efforts of our Occupational Health Group. We now have a qualified nurse performing the temperature screenings at both locations. We instituted a modified shift rotation that utilized our backup control center for our night operations. This rotation stopped all human interaction at shift change. We use FaceTime, WebEx, and Microsoft Teams to communicate between the shifts. We took a long look at how we do business concerning non-time-based activities, meaning that if it didn't matter when we did the work, we shifted that work to the middle of the night. This reduced the staffing requirement in the control room during the day. We're able to shift employees to off-peak hours, further limiting the human interaction. Finally, as a contingency plan to the sequester option, we developed and are continually working to enhance an isolated work-location strategy, which is basically setting up a third control room to keep social interactions to a minimum. This will strengthen our existing strategy, further protecting our employees. I believe these actions, plus a little good luck, are providing to be beneficial in protecting our obligation to serve power to the city of San Antonio and the surrounding areas. And I'd love to answer any questions, if you have any. All right, hearing no questions, we'll transition to our power generation area. Mr. Benny Etheridge.
Thank you, Zach. Good afternoon, trustees. Benny Etheridge, Senior Vice President of Power Generation. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you just a little bit about how we're managing COVID-19 and power generation. Why don't we start on page 28. We've built a diverse generation portfolio to serve our customers. We pull, we use different fuel sources, natural gas, coal, nuclear, the sun, the wind. Most recently, we're moving forward with our Commerce Battery Storage Facility. At the end of the day, we're still a people business. We've got to have good people to run our business. If you'll go to PDF page 29. Our plants are complex. We require skilled employee teams to run them. COVID-19 represents a threat to those teams. When we took a look at that, we stepped back, we assessed our operational environment. We wanted to identify all those contact points that our people are confronted with on a daily basis that represent a possible source for contagion. We worked with People and Culture and Enterprise and Public Safety using CDC guidelines to develop protection plans for our folks. And we implemented those plans. We restructured our workforce so that we had relief teams available and isolated so that if we had a problem, we had a team ready to step in. They were ready to go. And finally, we worked with the larger CPS Energy Enterprise team to develop sequestration plans if needed. All in all, we're in as good a position as we can be in today, and we believe we're ready to continue dealing with the COVID-19 virus as we move forward. And if, we'll go to page 30, I'm happy to take any questions you might have. And if, we'll go to page 30, I'm happy to take any questions you might have. Okay, hearing none. Back to you, Corey. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Yeah, thank you, Benny, and thank you to all of our speakers. Really appreciate the time, and it's really good insight to hear from, from those leaders on the front lines. And, you know, we hear a lot of similar themes, you know, throughout, and it's really focused on the people and ensuring that their health, so that they can be available to continue the operations. So great work, and thank you for the questions as well, trustees. As we kind of pivot now, I'm on slide 31, page 31. You know, we've kind of talked about, you know, the operational areas we're doing and the mitigation steps they're taking around avoiding high-contact areas and social distancing. We want to talk about, give Don an opportunity to talk about the in-depth planning that's occurred through the guidance of the Enterprise Resiliency Team and that support. There's going to be, the next few sessions kind of fall under that area, so let me introduce it on page, page 32. So pivot to that page. Bert actually alluded to the Enterprise Resiliency Team earlier in his presentation, and this is kind of a visual illustration of that. You know, it has Paula and our senior leaders on that team, and they've provided, you know, the strong level of leadership and decision-making for all of CPS Energy. And, you know, part of the activities being done under that guidance and leadership has been the thoughtfulness and planning around what a sequestration plan may look like, you know, should events on the ground worsen. And so that's why you see Don there, you know, he has stepped up to the plate and led that effort. And you also see Vidya as well. She resides in IT, in the IT Business Unit under Vivian, but she has stepped up to the plate as well and been leading that planning effort on what returning to the office looks like. And then, of course, you know, the financial element of it as well, you know, we've been taking a keen focus on what those impacts look like. And, you know, Shannon Alba will be speaking relative to the credit rating risk and the strong relationship. So, that said, let me go ahead and pivot to our first section here with Don relative to the sequestration planning on slide 33.
Good afternoon, board members. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Don Stanton, and I'm currently the Senior Director of Gas Compliance. And I've been given the opportunity to work with a wonderful cross-functional team on a sequestration plan that I'll share with you today. You heard from a lot of the operational team leaders about the mitigation plans and the prevention and protection plans that they've put in place for our employees. But you also heard some of them mention the potential for sequestering employees if the threat of COVID-19 intensifies for our employees. So that's what we're going to talk about a little bit today. As you can probably imagine, sequestration is a very complex and difficult process, and it involves a lot of thoughtful planning and involvement from our entire organization. And the image on the right kind of depicts all of the areas within CPS Energy that we had to bring together to put together such a plan to support our employees that may be subject to sequestration. It involved just about every part of the organization to ensure that we were properly supporting this plan. So if we'll flip to slide, or page 34. So with that, we established this cross-functional team to develop this very comprehensive plan. And the plan was really designed to ensure that we had the availability of these critical employees that we discussed earlier, mainly our control room operations personnel out of Energy Supply and Market Operations. You heard from Kevin. Power Generation, we heard from Benny. And the System Operations Teams that you heard from Zach. Also, as we built this plan, we're continuing to look at opportunities to improve the plan and build flexibility into the plan as the environment continues to change, even with the opening of the local area and the state. So with that, we've conducted some additional workshops with the team to look for gaps and opportunities to make those improvements. And we are scheduling a tabletop exercise to really kind of stress this plan, to be sure that we have an effective plan that will properly support those employees should we have to go into a sequestration event. We'll move on to slide number 35, page number 35. As we developed the plan, our risk team worked with us closely to help identify some of the potential risk related to the plan. People being the most important and really instrumental part of sequestration and of our business, as Benny mentioned, that, of course, rose to the top. And some of the risk concerns that were identified was ensuring, you know, the mental and physical well-being of our employees and being able to take care of that, as well as the well-being of the employees' family members, as that can surely negatively impact anyone. It was, we also saw that there's a potential that we could have some individuals that may not be able to participate in the sequestration, so we had to address that as well. We looked at what are some of the challenges that we could have and need to address with the changing environment as we move through COVID-19, something that we're all trying to deal with and haven't dealt with in the past, as well as we saw the need to be able to have consistent and safe practices amongst our employees to ensure that the safety and well-being of our employees while they were in the program. So the mitigation strategies and focus was to develop some screening procedures and standards to ensure the health and safety of our employees, to identify and make sure that we had the necessary resources to support employees and their families and their well-being. And also to create some guidelines around, you know, how our employees would be able to work together within this sequestered environment. So if we'll move on to PDF page number 36. So since employees in this plan can be away from their families for an extended period of time, anywhere from, say, three to eight weeks, we held some feedback sessions with the operations teams so that we could better understand what their concerns and needs were. And we held them at various times of the day and night when it was convenient for those employees. And so the results was that we had developed not only the sequester plan, but 11 supporting plans to help care and support for our employees while in the program. These plans included things like sequestration triggers. What were the triggers? What were the metrics and the indicators that we would be looking at and continuing to monitor? And Paula mentioned some of those in the beginning around the local environment and the environment within CPS Energy and within the state. Lodging requirements, cleaning and sanitation standards around how we would take care of our employees and the areas that they would be living in and the areas they would be working in, as well as protocols around medical security and safety. How would we handle events that may come up, or how would we handle the screening of employees? And so these were built into plans. Of course, wellness and of the employee and their families are paramount, and plans have been put together on resources that we can have available for employees and their families, for the individuals that are involved in sequestration, as well as meals and laundry and information technology that, to not only communicate with employees, between employees and management, and amongst themselves, but also with employees and their families. And then transportation of moving employees from their work areas to their living areas. In addition, comprehensive communication plans have been developed and are sitting in the wings should we need to enact sequestration, and how we're going to communicate with our employees and with the general public. So all in all, there's been a huge amount of thoughtfulness and effort from many, many folks across the organization. And we continue to put this thoughtfulness and effort into this plan and look for ways to make it more flexible as the environment changes. And this is a plan that we hope not to use, but we have that, and it is prepared should we need to use it. So with that, I'll move to slide 37, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, Don, I'd like to thank you and all of the leadership team, and of course, Paula with leading this. This is something I've been asking from, from day one, every time I've been called, I've been asking for the sequestration plan because of what transpired with the industry of the pork, the beef, and the food supplies, that how we have sequestration electricity. And I think y'all have done a uniform thoughts and efforts, and all the plans that y'all put into this, and y'all thought making it available to this board, I think is a key component. And thank y'all for the well-thought-out and plan of the sequestration plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate that. And, yeah, thank you, Trustee Dr. Mackey. That's great feedback. And as Chair, we appreciate your input and that feedback. Well, we'll pass halfway, and I just want to pause. Trustee Dr. Mackey, if there's any other additional guidance or insight as we continue, or questions that you have.
Continue, that'll be fine.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So pivot to slide page 38. Here we are, you know, as Don walked through that plan, if conditions worsen, you know, on the other side of that, we'll be hearing from Vidya to talk about the same level of kind of planning and effort that's gone into thinking about what a return back to the office looks like. So appreciate her leadership, and I'll hand it over to her on slide number 39. Thanks, Vidya.
Thank you, Corey. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Vidya Rangatar. I am Interim Senior Director in our Energy Delivery Services for CPS Energy. And I appreciate the opportunity this afternoon to give you all a brief overview of what CPS is thinking about as we emerge from this crisis. So you heard a lot from our operational leaders of what they've been doing during the crisis, and, you know, you heard what happens if it worsens. Now, as we monitor conditions, what does it look like as we bring people back into the office? So to develop this plan, CPS leadership has been very deliberate, and we have been very purposeful in creating this cross-functional, what we are calling the New Normal Team, to develop this plan. It aligns with several other teams, with the communications, training, safety, change management, and facilities, of course. But also, I want to highlight the alignment with the headquarters team, because as you know, we are going to move to the new headquarters later this year, and there's a big piece of this that needs to kind of dovetail into that. So with anything, our safety, the safety of our employees is a key focus of this plan. How, you know, there's a couple of things on this slide, how we are managing to meet, how are we aligning these teams? We are using technology. You heard Microsoft Teams and WebEx. Those have become our staples, because this, it's a lot of different kinds of employees. You may have heard the orange, white, and blue teams. If you go to the page number 40, this should be, you should have seen this before, this is just a reminder. Paula mentioned this before, that we were, you know, CPS was the first to kind of go into the crisis, if you will. Very early on, our leadership team decided we are going to categorize our team members into three different groups. The orange team, which are the distant support personnel, who can support everything, the operations that they do remotely. A white team, which is, comes into the office as needed. A blue team, which is our field operations and the essential employees in the field. So this is our current state today, and I just wanted to kind of show this as a reminder to you. So how are we going about this? We are, of course, monitoring all the available guidance, be it from the CDC, the city, county, and state guidance. You heard earlier that we had medical, you know, Dr. Hassett from Concentra give us his insights earlier today. So we have several avenues that we are kind of monitoring, also monitoring other companies, what they are doing. We are also continuing mitigating the risk, right, our hygiene practices, cleaning, we are requiring face covering, requiring everybody to maintain social distance, whether they're in the office or really anywhere. We are continuing remote work where it's possible, limiting size of gatherings, especially CR safety meetings every morning. We are screening employees with our temperature checks and any questions that go along with it. And of course, any non-essential travel has been completely minimized. And I want to emphasize this last bit, is none of this is successful or even possible without a very strong team effort, and that definitely necessitates, you know, strong communication and education for leaders and employees alike. If you go to the next page, number 42, we are keeping all that in mind, right? We are implementing what is a multi-layered approach to protect our people, keeping them safe in this situation. The layer one, the screening plan, starts when the employee enters the facility. The verbal screening, the temperature check, fall into this category. We are in the process of implementing this at every facility at this time. There are a few already in place. We're continuously rolling out this screening to all our facilities. Layers two and three, which is the face coverings and social distancing, that is in place today. We have guidance for everybody to wear masks and, you know, very clear direction on what social distancing means, how do we practice it. And layer four is our, the main focus of the New Normal Team, which is what are the onsite changes? What does the occupancy look like? Is it 25%, 50%? How do we manage? How do we monitor? What are the guidelines for the public spaces? And public spaces can range from the conference rooms to hallways, lobbies, restrooms. So we are working very closely with different areas of the company to make sure that whatever guidance we have, we are, you know, it is consistent, and the employees know what they can expect when they come back into the office. One of the things we are working on right now is, with the different business units, is just getting an idea of how critical their operations are, what are their reasons to come back into the facilities, whether it be access to technology or a printer, whatever it may be, just so that we have an idea of how, when we start opening the facilities up, what order do we open them up in. So that brings me to slide 43, and that's where we are with the New Normal Team planning. I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
Oh, ma'am, this is John Stein. On the return-to-office plan, where you're mentioning the layers, why aren't you addressing COVID testing?
The COVID testing is, so we are looking into it. Bert, if he's still on the line, he can probably answer better. But that would come into the layer one, which is the screening plan. At this point, the screening plan includes a temperature check and the verbal screening. But if we do... But if we do institute testing, that's where it would come. Bert, do you have anything else to add on this?
Well, just an anecdote, my daughter lives in Houston. I'm wondering if this is, if this is the case in San Antonio. And she said that my, that she and my son-in-law went to a, it was a former location of a Walmart. There were, the National Guard was there, but it's drive-through testing and that they were able to, they waited about 10 minutes and they, there's no contact with anybody. According to her, very little paperwork, but you can get tested and get the results pretty quickly. Is that, do we know, is that available in San Antonio? Is that something that we should be thinking about requiring people or asking people to do?
I think it's a good idea. Reading earlier in the, and there's a testing site similar in Austin, like those checkpoints where you get your sticker bars and stuff. They, Austin, they have some checkpoints at those right there where they do the same testing, but it's a two-day results and they've got, they work two-day results. I have, I've been wondering about the same thing, Mr. Steen. Is there any, any testing here in San Antonio?
Yeah, yes, there is. This is Bert. The Freeman Coliseum has testing set up for the city. They're also doing some testing and pop-ups as well as other locations with the National Guard.
But to be, but to be clear, this is not something where you have to, a doctor has to send you or you have to, you have to attest and you have symptoms. The, what my daughter went through in Houston, anybody can do it. It's just drive in there and get tested. And she, they heard the same day, the results.
Yes, that's available in San Antonio also. The city testing is, is three to five days. One of the things that our medical director told us today was that there's some concerns about the, the false positives and false negatives with, with those tests. So it's something that's, it's part of our arsenal at this point, but not, isn't one of our primary options. As Vidya said, we're, we're, our screening plan is to do the verbal and the temperature checks for all employees at all facilities coming into work. In addition, we're, as part of our mitigation plan to hopefully prevent the need to do sequestration, we're looking at doing preemptive testing on our control room operators. There's some other utilities around the country that are, are doing that to, to try to protect those control room operators.
And trustees, this is Frank Almraz. And I would note that Bert and Fred were able to have, not just Dr. Hassett on the phone, just actually just a couple of hours ago with us, but the national epidemiology leader for Concentra, who is their, you know, their top expert, talked to us about those testing options, rapid tests, RNA, the antibodies, and how those fit together in a portfolio of testing that will meet our needs the best way possible to keep our employees safe. In addition to, you know, the public testing that's available with the Freeman Coliseum.
Safe for instance, like we have, we're checking the temperature and, and our employees. And if the temperature is high and they, and other symptoms, do we immediately send them to the Joe Freeman Coliseum to get tested or what do we do with them?
So our plan right now is we, we recommend our employees, if they have a high temperature or any of the symptoms, to, to go to the COSA website and do the screening. And that screening will tell you whether to go get tested or not. And so that's, that's our, our protocol right now.
But, but to weigh into it, to, to Chair, Chair of the Risk Committee, Trustee Dr. Mackey, our natural protocol is if anybody is either, had done something where they were in a, exposed in a, in a large area, whatever they disclose to us that we believe that they could have been infected, they can't come back until they have actually gone through the process and verified that they've been tested. So we've had a lot of people tested already because of their, their high temperatures or their activities, you know, where they've been exposed to large groups or somebody in their family's gotten tested. So we are using the tool that you're talking about. And I think what Frank is indicating is we're trying to find additional ways to get those layers of testing, rapid testing, antibody testing, all those different avenues. We have studied this for quite some time. There is a real challenge relative to if you're exposed, sometimes you don't have any of the symptoms for five days. And this whole thing about false positives and false negatives, depending on what testing you get, is still a valid issue. But to your point, if we have somebody at risk, they will not be allowed back in till we are very sure that they are not infected.
Well, do we follow through to make sure, who, who, the people in the company, has they been in contact with, have they had a high temperature? And, you know, there, you know, I understand exactly what you're saying and I think that's a good procedure. However, you know, I think getting them, sending them to the right place to get test, to get tested and treated as soon as possible would be something to add to that risk too.
There are more, there are more centers to your point that we're actually being able to access. And yes, we ask a lot of questions about not just them, but what's happening in the home. And we, what we find in some of the cases in the near misses or some of the cases where someone has the antibody and they've been exposed, they're not sick, but somebody in their house has been sick. So you're right, it gets to be a pretty complicated perspective, but we are continuing to evolve all of the avenues. And now that the city is getting even more, more testing facilities and now that we have a contract with Concentra, we're going to have more avenues for testing.
Do we have any other board members, any question before we proceed with Shannon Albert? If not, let's proceed with Ms. Albert.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey, trustee. Shannon Albert, Senior Director of our Treasury Area. And I want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to visit with you. I wanted to start off, we'll move to PDF page 45. I wanted us to start off by anchoring us back to our guiding pillars and foundation. I know you've seen this slide many times and many presentations, but I think it's, it couldn't be more relevant than in today's discussion. You've heard from a number of our leaders today talk about how we are dealing as a company with the risk and impacts of this pandemic. And we're doing this really through the lens of our guiding pillars. So we've talked our operations, both gas and electric, ensuring that we have a safe transition back to our offices. And, and everything is always viewed through the lens of being financially responsible. So today, my discussion is really going to cover a risk that has really broad financial impacts. As we've seen, the financial implications of COVID really to individuals and businesses is really evolving. And what we're seeing is we're seeing the rating agencies are really monitoring and scrutinizing all industry sectors. There's been a lot of rating agency activity over the last couple of months. And this is a time when changes in sector outlooks and possible, and downgrades in credit ratings are really possible. We recently shared with you two specific instances of rating agencies changing their outlooks. And the first was really S&amp;P changing their outlook from stable to negative. And this was for all public finance sectors, including utilities. And then shortly after that, in the following week, Fitch changed their outlook for the PFC, which is our Public Facility Corporation, that holds our prepaid gas transaction from stable to negative. This was a result of a change in outlook for one of our counterparties in the transaction, Goldman Sachs. And so again, we're seeing the implications and the domino effects of, of what the rating agencies are seeing and how they're looking at outlooks for various industries. So we're, we're seeing that the agencies are very focused on understanding impacts on some of the same items we're talking to you today about. Our operations, are we fully functioning? How are deploying our workforce? They want to understand our business revenues. And in cases where they want to understand what are the impacts to our demand? Are we seeing declining sales? Are we seeing that on the retail side, the wholesale side? They want to understand the impacts to certain sectors of, industry sectors and where there's high concentration of industrial and commercial customers that may be impacted. They're asking about our accounts receivable and how those are being impacted. Are we seeing slowing of payments? How are our customers impacted? Are they asking for payment, or requesting payment plans? Are we seeing an increase in payment plan requests? And, and how are our commercial customers impacted? And then of course, they're always concerned about our liquidity. But I think in today's times, considering the implications of COVID, managing liquidity is essential. And so they're, they're looking to see if we have ample cash reserves and, and do we have access to cash if needed. So I'll ask you to move on to page, PDF page 46. And I'll talk a little bit about how CPS Energy fares in all of this. I will say we're starting from a good place. We're very fortunate because we have excellent credit ratings. We have a very strong cash position and solid financial metrics. And a lot of that is generated, the last several years, we've had very successful financial years. Our generation fleet performed well. We have strong sales and overall financial performance. So that has really helped build up our liquidity position. And then we also have access to our current capacity for commercial papers, about 500 million. And we're also, the team is looking at options, other options, to provide some diversity in our liquidity. Our approach really has been to be proactive with the rating agencies and holding frequent discussions and we share information throughout the year, not just in a situation like COVID, but we're constantly talking to the rating agencies. However, in the last few weeks, Paula and our senior chiefs, along with the financial leadership, met with all three of the rating agencies. We met with Moody's, S&amp;P and Fitch to hold conversations about how we are dealing as an organization with COVID-19. And they really were looking at, you know, the people, the people component, the community perspective, how it was impacting operations, our security, our supply chain, and then the potential financial implications, which we shared with them, the recent financial impact analysis that was conducted and shared at the April Board meeting. So we've been sharing all of this information with the rating agencies. I would say overall, the discussions have been very positive. The dialogue has been robust and we're going to continue to provide them periodic updates. And ultimately, these conversations are essential to keep them abreast of our, our strategy. And our overall objective is really to ensure the rating agencies understand our strategies and how we're mitigating the risks and impacts of the pandemic. I would say overall, our end, our end goal is to maintain the current credit ratings with each of the agencies. And continued communication is a pathway to help us do that. I will move on to PDF page 47 and pause to see if, if, Dr. Mackey, if you or any of the trustees have any questions.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, so I know that Slide 43, pretty much, these are pillars in our foundation and you have security in there. But doesn't like a cyber attack have an effect on our financial rating?
So I will tell you, trustee Gonzalez, that rating agencies are always, always interested in our cybersecurity program. The several, well, probably the last two to three years, we've had, we've had leaders from our security area visit as part of our annual visit with the rating agencies to make them, just to brief them on where we are on our cybersecurity program. So that is a, definitely a hot topic, hot button for the rating agencies.
And the only reason why I'm saying this, because on Slide 44, it would be nice to just say, you know, solid security measures also as part of the overall picture. I guess, because I kind of feel like it's, it's done, but it's not top of mind. That can affect us, I guess, based on the conclusion slide.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, trustee Gonzalez, you're right. I mean, we're, it's one of our highest, and they, when we go see them and we went in December, they saw that our security risk and our cyber approach was a very highly rated risk. So we talk to them all the time. I think what we're, what we're indicating now relative to COVID, they have been focused on the economic and financial implications beyond that. But they do expect us to still pay attention to the security risk. So I think we were just highlighting, when they did talk to us, the primary focus was on the economy and that was just recently. We expect them to continue to talk to us and ask us about those other things as well. But they saw, they saw that it was a priority in December.
Okay, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cory, can you give us a recap?
Yes, I can. So I will pivot to slide, slide 46, sorry, 48. You know, I guess first I want to, want to thank everyone as well. Thank you, Chair of the Risk Committee, Trustee Dr. Mackey, for your questions and feedback and input during this meeting. Thank you to all the trustees. Definitely thank you to the speakers who prepared and have been leading this effort, you know, the front lines. And thank you obviously to Paula and, you know, her leadership and the chief's leadership as, you know, they've, they've constantly done a wonderful job in stealing kind of their enterprise strategic view of risk throughout this, you know, entire time. You know, just to close out, consistent with all the messages we've heard today, you know, we're going to continue to, you know, deliver, you know, our consistent reliable services and our operations, you know, by continuing this focus of risk and proactive planning that you heard here today. And as you also heard today, we'll continue to be prepared to adapt to any worsening conditions. And obviously focused on an eventual return to, to a new normal for whatever that ends up looking like. And then as Shannon alluded to, you know, we continue to monitor the evolving financial impacts as those kind of are foundational and ensuring that we can do, you know, all the things that we do well. So thank you again, Chair of the Risk Committee, Trustee Dr. Mackey. That'll conclude my comments. And if there's anything else, we have all the speakers here to open it up for questions. All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cory. Ms. Shillman, can you take us into closed session?
I will. At this time, the committee, the board as a whole, will recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been posted under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including attorney-client matters, deliberations concerning real property, on prospective gifts or donations, on personnel, on security personnel or devices, on economic development negotiations, on competitive matters regarding security audits and devices, or to deliberate under Texas Government Code Section 418.183F about information under the Texas Homeland Security Code. At, at the conclusion of the executive session, the board will come back into open session. But at this point, there are no voting items planned or other discussions to take place. So according to my clock, it's 2:52 and the board will now move into executive session to discuss matters as presented.
Ms. Shillman? Yeah, please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees will be in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily. Thank you.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected...
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily. Thank you.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily. Thank you.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by.
Please stand by. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume momentarily.
You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting. Please stand by. You are connected-
Mr. Steen, this is Carolyn Schellman. If you would like me to, I will call the roll to see if we have a quorum to resume our open session.
Yes, and then you need to bring us back into open session after the roll.
I will do that. I will do that. John Steen?
Present.
Dr. Mackey?
Present.
Mr. Kelly?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
All right. At this time, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees has concluded its executive session. It is now reconvening in open session to continue the work of the board today. During executive session, matters were discussed as posted, but nothing else was discussed and no votes were taken. And so it is now 4:09 PM and the board is ready to resume its open session.
I think the only item that remains on the agenda is to adjourn, so we need a motion.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
From Dr. Mackey, is there a second?
Okay.
Second from Ed Kelly. Any discussion here, any none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.